I'd like to call to order the September 4, 2019 meeting of Borough Council for the Committee of the Whole. Would you kindly stand for a moment of silence followed by a pledge to the flag?
My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every religion, justice, for all.
Under Subcommittee Reports, Vice President Kulp. I want a reminder to all the councilors, please stay close to your microphones for the people in the back.
Okay, I had my infrastructure meeting on 8:15. Parks and Recs, we had an issue with our summer programs and the school district, we're gonna have to look for a new place to have our summer program, our summer camp, since we can no longer use edgewood. Dealing with the Ricketts Center and that, what's going on there, maybe possibly getting together with Strive to see what can be done. Flood things that were going on, the ballfields, they're working on them, they're restoring $60,000 for outside contractors. And after Pet Fair, we're gonna try to redo the Bark Park. Bridge still closed and waiting on grants possibly for that and possibly taking it down. The timing with Shoemaker Road and Route 100 is King Street's coming up with the new lights, lighting and that. Water sewer work at Washington and Wilson to hail, new water pipes, sewer in areas, work in front of the middle school. College Drive cement done and that's open now, I'm sure everyone knows. And hopefully that, since that controller was ruined because of the flood down at College Drive, it's gonna, hopefully we have insurance that'll cover that and that's about it for infrastructure.
Very good, thank you. Economic Development, Ms. Lee Clark.
Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor. For the Economic Development Report, everything old is new again. The very best opened its doors to the public today in the downtown, so if you haven't been there, I ran into Mr. Bray. I'm sure he'll be reading a story about it. It's really amazing. The new owner worked really hard on it. I caught him once in the winter, he was in there and he actually had gone through five layers of flooring to get to the original, so it really looks great in there. He's put a lot of time and effort into getting it open again. The Blue Elephant will be taking guests. It opens its doors on Friday. It will be closed, it will be open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Monday it will be closed for a private party. But I know that everybody is interested in seeing it, although the Samba Sances have been very gracious in allowing people to have sneak peeks for the last couple of weeks. I see people wandering in, the curious just cannot wait. So it's beautiful space if you haven't seen it, and I'm sure the food will be just delicious. Delian Dean, the Reeves are residents of the borough. They are opening where the former Daniels Produce would be. They'll be open any day now. That will be organics as well as whole healthy food options and some reclaimed furniture offerings with decor. So I hope you will support these businesses. It's really important that we've clamored for these businesses, it's really important that we get out there and that we support these businesses. The Farmer's Market, the former Farmer's Market, the High Street Terminal sign is up, so you will see that beautiful sign. And we continue to see more and more development in the downtown. Mr. Keller and I, along with the Tri-County Area Chamber, bringing the group together, the Downtown Pioneers as we call them, on a monthly basis to talk about events and coordination of events. And we will be bringing some things to, for your approval next month, so look for that. There will be really exciting things through the fall and through the holidays for events to encourage others from out of town to come visit Pottstown. That's my report.
Very good, thank you. Transportation, Vice President Kulp.
Our meeting was tonight, I'll have a report next week.
Okay. Ad hoc zoning, Councilor Proskel.
No meeting.
No meeting. Efficient Methods, Councilor Lebedinsky.
No meeting.
Okay. And under the Board's Emergency Services Reports, Chief.
We really had a quiet month this month, which was good.
That's good.
There was no fire laws in the borough. We had 79 fire calls in the borough, we had 380 EMS calls in the borough, and 15 fire police runs in the borough, so it was a pretty quiet month.
Wonderful.
Nothing else going on until next month, hopefully.
Good to hear.
I hope it's quiet next month, too.
We're not looking for more.
Yeah, we don't want no more. We don't want.
I did that report.
Okay, yes.
Fire prevention month.
If we can get that police report like.
Okay, Human Relations, Ms. Levinburne.
Good evening, councilors, the past president, Wynn, and Madam Mayor. National Hispanic Heritage Month is from September 15th to October 15th by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. It is celebrated from September 15th to October 15th because September 15th is the anniversary of Independence Day for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Days on September 16th and September 18th. Also Columbus Day, or Dia de la Rosa, which is October 12th, falls within this 30-day period. In Pottstown, CCLU will be holding its fourth annual Latin Festival on Saturday, September 21st, from 12:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Riverfront Park, and we encourage the public to attend this free event to celebrate the Hispanic heritage. Listed on Council's agenda tonight is a candidate for the vacant Commissioner position for your consideration. And the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, September 10th, at 6:00 p.m. in the council meeting room, and all are welcome to attend.
Very good. Land Bank, Ms. Penrod. Anyone for the land bank? Anyone for the library? Huh? Olivet Boys and Girls Club, Councilor Kirkland.
Yes, just a little bit about operations. Olivets will continue to offer most of their evening programming, including homework help, karate, and dance, among others. They will no longer provide the year-long programs since they cannot be finished. We at the borough pushed back the deadline for the RFGs from August 30th to September 20th due to giving prospects more time.
Okay.
Your report.
Are you seeing more volunteers coming to help?
Yes, yes.
Good sign.
So we're happy to see that, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Pottstown School District, Councilor Lindsay.
I got there a little late at the school board meeting. It was just a regular meeting. Joe was there, Joe Cerisi, he was there. He gave a little breakdown of what was going on, what he was doing in Pottstown and stuff like with the train, with transportation and stuff like that, but nothing major to report.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Mayor's Report, Madam Mayor.
Dawn and I had a pretty awesome time last, two weekends ago. Pottstown was full of events. The community event at the airport, I was kind of disappointed not to see a lot of people there. It was pretty cool, for $20, who got an airplane ride and lunch. And they pulled some strings and got a Blackhawk to come, and I mean, it was really awesome. I took a video and put it on Facebook if you want to see it. So next year, you know, come out, it's a lot of fun, and there's a lot of different aircrafts that you can see and who can say they could go on an airplane and see Pottstown from the sky for 20 bucks. I did not go because I chickened out at the last minute. I will go.
I was gonna ask Kat.
I'm going in a larger plane.
How do we?
What about Dawn? Did Dawn go on?
How does Pottstown look from above?
I have a lovely photo in my office that a pilot took for me, and it is pretty awesome. And it'll be over in about a second.
And next year, you're going?
Sooner than that. And I'm gonna make Dawn go with me.
Yes.
I wanted to have him go, what was that thing called?
It's a Whirlybird.
It was not a Whirlybird. It is a contraption where basically there's a parachute behind you and you pedal, and it's got like a lawnmower attached to it.
Oh, yeah, you should take Dawn with you.
I was trying to get, I wanted to represent his ward, but it's only a one person and the guy wouldn't trust Dawn.
We may need a new mayor and a new council.
But maybe the gyroscope. Gyroscope, not the gyroscope. Also, Hobart's Run at PCA had a block party that afternoon. I'm sure you saw lovely photographs of, in the paper, of children and myself getting stuck in one of the balls. And thank you to John Armato for helping me stand up. And I just did it for the picture, I didn't hurt my back, I promise. I did not bounce around. It looks a lot of fun. And by the way, you can borrow, I'm pretty sure you can borrow all of these toys and activities from Hobart's Run, so, you know. I think we should have you guys in a ball war.
Didn't hear?
Yes. Evan wants to videotape and put it on. Also that day, Wayne Ellington of the New York Knicks came down to the Ricketts Center and was presented with a proclamation for his donation to, of the basketball courts to the Ricketts Center, and he made a lot of kids really happy. We also had our Area 1 Democratic meeting this week, last week?
Last week.
Past week, where we met a lot of the candidates that are running in the county, including school board for Pottstown, Potts Grove, judicial candidates, and other judges. District Court and Council and Commissioner, yes. PCA also had to clean up over the weekend, and college football started. Friday, I went to Ay Caramba, then to Kiki, then to the Alley, and then to the Pub, all in, I don't know, like three hours. It was so packed downtown, and it was so much fun. If you haven't gone downtown, please go. It's all in walking distance, you can hit that many places, probably in less than the time that I hit, but the frozen Arnold Palmers were a little strong, so it took us a little bit to walk a block. We also last night had our PCA meeting at Barth Gardens. And tonight, I regret, I am sadly missing our Rotary meeting where Bill Haley Jr. is speaking tonight, and I was really looking forward to that, so I can't wait to see the videos from that. Coming up Friday, the 6th, is First Friday, at the Carousel, from 5:00 to 8:00. There's also the Sidewalk Chalk Festival at that time at the Carousel. Also, from 6:00 to 7:30 on Friday is the Family Bike and Yoga at Riverfront Park with Samana Holistic Center. And at the Alley, from 6:30 to 9:30, Rowdy Howdy and the Infinity Party will be playing. Saturday, the 7th, Pottstown Nights Car Show from 5:00 to 9:00 at High and Hanover. Also on Saturday during the day, from 10:00 to 2:00, is the Ninth Annual Pet Fair at Memorial Park. Friday, the 13th, is Vet En Blanc from 6:00 to 9:00 at Smith Family Plaza. If you haven't gotten tickets, we are sold out, I apologize, but you should come because there's going to be 500 people dressed in white running around Smith Family Plaza. No? Are you saying no?
Yes, there are gonna be 500 people, but they're implementing, I want to be clear there's no more seating.
No, right, I said they could come and take photos of 500 people wearing white down in Pottstown. And the 20th, I will be participating in the Foundation for Pottstown Education Strategic Planning Brainstorming Session, so more on that after. As Marsha said, Saturday, the 21st, is the Latin Festival from 12:00 to 6:00. Before that, though, you can go from 9:30 to 11:30, meet at Smith Plaza for the Bodega Bike Tour. You will be going around on bicycles to all of the neat bodegas in Pottstown, including Brunishes, and then you could head over to the Latin Festival. The 28th, Saturday, from 9:00 to 2:00, is the Hazardous Waste Drop Off in Royersford. The only reason I'm mentioning this is because there's very few and far between of these, and it's free. It's at 400 North Lewis Road in Royersford. You can bring all your hazardous waste there, paints and all the stuff that's in your basement and get rid of it safely. Also on Saturday, the 28th, from 8:30 to 3:00, is Ride the River with Sly Fox, and they are promising biking, beer, and bands. And also on the 28th, sorry.
No, I love it.
September's a really busy month. It's the fall.
Yes, go ahead, I love it.
Saturday, the 28th, sign up beforehand, bring your kids, 10:00 to 12:00, is Ride the Carousel with Disney Princesses. You know how much you all want to go to that. I want to go to that, but.
I do, too.
Princess, what are you being, damn.
It's no way. All right, so that's September, and then just October, the first couple days. Wednesday, the 2nd, is a very busy day in Pottstown. We have the Community Leaders Breakfast in the morning, there's a walking school bus event in the morning, and coffee with a cop from 9:00 to 11:00 at Smith Family Plaza. And I have to be at all three of those at the same time, so we'll be walking the school bus to Coffee with a Cop. And Friday, the 4th, Rupert Elementary, 3rd Grade will be having their field trip to Borough Hall to meet with me, the Pottstown Police Department, Ryan Proskel, and Judge Palladino. And Saturday, the 5th, 12:00 p.m., is our Second Annual Cheese Toberfest at Memorial Park. And that is it.
And you're going to all of them?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, Mr. Manager, top that.
Yeah.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. So I'm happy to announce that the borough has won the Montgomery Award for the Walk and Bike Pottstown Project. This is a prestigious annual program that recognizes the best in planning design in Abixie in Montgomery County. Program promotes awareness of outstanding design and innovative planning. There will be an awards presentation on November 13th for the borough to accept this award. Just a brief update on the PICO Street Lighting Project. If you recall, there are issues with the underground wiring on the pedestrian-level streetlights on High Street between Madison and Manatani. PICO had initially started this project, but ran into some issues due to all the street trees that could have been damaged in the project. So we quickly went out there and did an assessment and basically, you know, directed them that they need to look at some alternatives or we're gonna lose all of our street trees. So they've come back since, they have a new design, they're gonna put, they're gonna run all their conduits in the street instead of the sidewalk now, so there won't be any damage to the sidewalks or the street trees. That is pending start in the next couple months, as soon as they get their highway occupancy permit from PennDOT. Just an update on the Parking Committee. We met with them on August 22nd to assess the new paid parking regulations. And in an effort to better serve customers who do not wish to pay by phones or credit cards, it was agreed that four new kiosks will be purchased that will accept credit cards, cash, or coin, and one kiosk will be, one existing kiosk will be retrofitted. The total cost for that project will be $40,000, which will come out of the parking reserves. The parking kiosk will be located on-street on each block, from the 100 block to the 400 block, will be one on each of those blocks. And of course, Park Mobile is still an alternate payment option for the on-street and in the lots. The one replacement kiosk that will be retrofitted is going to be the one on Lot, in Lot 2, on Charlotte and High Street. That has been dysfunctional for a long period of time, and it's expected that these will be up and running within the next six weeks. As Councilor Kirkland mentioned, the Ricketts Proposals request for qualifications has been extended until September 20th, so I would encourage any applicants, any organizations that are interested in applying to do so before that date. Lastly, I want to provide an update on the floods from July 11th. We had a meeting this week with Pima, Montgomery County, as well many of our state and local representatives. And there's some good news and bad news regarding the funding that may be available as a result of this event. So the good news is for homes and businesses that were damaged by the flood, they will qualify for low-interest loans as a result of the event. So the way that I'm told that this works is that the damage threshold, there had to be a certain monetary threshold that was met, and although that was not met in Montgomery County, it was met in Berks County. So under the Declaration, which is expected to be passed any day now, that those funds would be available to any counties adjacent to Berks County which experienced damage from the flooding event. So this isn't official yet, but we're expecting an announcement to come out with more details in the upcoming days. Regarding the funding of public infrastructure, it appears that this category did not meet the threshold for aid, so these were improvements that got damaged in our parks, our roadways, our traffic controllers, they will not qualify for aid. And the reason for this is that the first step for state aid must meet a $19 million statewide threshold. I'm told that we're not close to meeting that threshold for this event, but even if that event was met, or if that amount was met for this event, the county, Montgomery County, would still have to meet a $3 million threshold. Currently, for public improvements, Montgomery County's only at a $1 million threshold. So it's not looking like we're going to get any state aid for the damage on that storm. So the biggest challenge that we're gonna have is the pedestrian bridge in Memorial Park, and at this point, our best route without burdening the taxpayers is to look for grants from DCNR and DCED to try to replace that piece of infrastructure, which is generally estimated somewhere around $400,000. And of course, with the grants, the next application window is in the spring. We wouldn't get a notice of award until fall 2020, and then we probably wouldn't get a contract until 2021. So just to kind of manage everyone's expectations, if we're going for a grant, it is gonna take a longer period of time, and we cannot commence work prior to receiving the grant or anticipation of receiving the grant. So we'll check with DCNR and DCED on that. We're also going to be working on sending letters out to the bridge owners, both PennDOT and Norfolk Southern, to ensure that they've cleared any debris away from their abutments to prevent the potential for future flooding on that area of the creek. There's no indication that that's what caused this most recent flooding, but the more recent flooding did bring a lot of debris to that area, so we want to make sure that that's cleaned up by those responsible for the bridges. And also, as a result of that meeting, the county is looking to include our underground stormwater arches in their hazard mitigation plan that they prepare every year, so they'll be reaching out to us to get those included. Having those on the plan will open up some alternative funding sources to help us get these arches repaired and maintained. And that's all that.
Good.
Justice, can I ask a question?
Sure.
What's our total, do we have a number for the total damage to the public infrastructure?
The total damage to the public infrastructure was just over $1 million.
It's fantastic. And Montgomery County didn't have a call of three?
They did not, no. And I did check, all of the surrounding municipalities did submit claims, Douglas Township, Lower Potts Grove Township, and a few others in this area, so.
Still not enough.
Still wasn't enough, and even if, even if we hit that $3 million, we still have to hit a $19 million statewide, which the county officials are telling us we're not even close to that either.
Good timing. At 7:30, which is in a minute, we're to have a public hearing for the Carousel of Pottstown. And as this time, I will turn the meeting of the public hearing over to our solicitor, Mr. Garner.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wynn. As you indicated, this is a public hearing that's held pursuant to the State Liquor Code. It's based upon a request the borough received from the Carousel of Pottstown and Rocky Centrino. The applicants in this case are seeking approval for inter-ministerial transfer of liquor license The license is currently located in Lower Gwinnett Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. If approved, the license would be transferred to property located at 30 West King Street. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comment and recommendation of interested individuals residing within the borough concerning the intent to transfer the license. I would point out that this hearing is a very limited scope. It's limited to whether or not the license should transfer from Lower Gwinnett to the borough. Under the Liquor Code, the governing body of the municipality receiving the license is required to hold a hearing of this nature, and if the municipality agrees that the license should be transferred, a resolution of council would be required to authorize the transfer. This does not override or supersede any other provisions of the Pennsylvania LCB or other provisions of the Liquor Control Board law. This is simply allowing the transfer from one portion of Montgomery County into another. The applicant is here this evening, Mr. Sager, can you just advise council specifically of what the request is?
Absolutely. Thank you for inviting us. The application for the liquor license transfer would be part and parcel with an ultimate renovation plan that we plan to present, and I'll discuss more formally tonight, at the Carousel Building. The idea is to bring in a restaurant that would have a liquor license. The renovation plan would create a new commissary area for the carousel. I will talk to you about the flood plan issue that we may be addressing in the near future. It's gonna be approximately a 1,200 square foot kitchen area. The kitchen area would also have the ability to serve alcohol to, inside the Carousel Building. We're gonna create it, and you'll see on the plans, a new seating area that can hold 250 to 300 people, renovations for large parties and large events, as well as a restaurant area. Also, there will be a seating area, if you're familiar with the mini-golf, to the south side of the Carousel. side of the Carousel Building. There's a little grassy area between the mini golf rails and the Carousel Building. There will be a seating area, and there will be easy access to a window to purchase food and alcohol and other beverages through this restaurant. The idea is to have the liquor license transferred to this particular area, and we would create that through the renovations.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would open up the hearing for any public comment with respect to this issue. Is there anyone that wishes to address council concerning the request to transfer this license from Lower Gwinnett to the borough? As President, I would suggest there's no further public comment. I would note on the agenda, the next item is a presentation from the carousel, and I presume, Mr. Sager, you're going to substitute for Mr. Arms in that?
Because our arms became the new grandfather at 2:30 this morning, so it'll be my honor to step in his place.
Okay, well, before we get to that, just so we procedurally can close this hearing now, because I think now we're going to delve into something separate and apart from the hearing. So one of the things council will have to decide if you want to approve that transfer of the license. But I'm going to close the public hearing. We've met our requirement under the Liquor Code to have the hearing. And unless there's questions of council, I think this will dovetail with the next presentation from Mr. Sager.
Right.
Everybody okay with that?
Any questions at this time?
I don't think I'm thinking about this. It is open to notifications. You can ask what you serve outside.
Absolutely.
Do you have a thought about that? Or should...
It's going to be the same type of plan that is in place, and I'll get this into the renovation idea as well. Everybody's going to be protected. I recognize it's an unusual situation since the borough owns the Carousel Building and the carousel is intended, for lack of a better term. We will guarantee, and I will be more than happy to share a draft of a proposed lease with the new restaurant owner that will hold the liquor license. I'll share that with your solicitor, that there's not only going to be a whole harmless provision, there will be a dedication provision for the protection of the borough, for the protection of the carousel. And there will be absolutely a per se violation that we will have to address. If there's one violation, then we're going to have to address it with the tenant. There'll be a provision in there that will not allow that. But it's going to be similar to, for lack of a better term, like a deck area, that you have a current area such as the alley or kiki's, for lack of a better term. Same situation, there's going to be supervision, there's going to be monitoring. I do not anticipate a large crowd outside in this seating area. I think it'll hold approximately 40 to 60 people, but small enough for a nice-sized party, but I don't anticipate 40 to 60 people at one time as well.
Yeah, the thing that really, first thing that popped in my head was the closed proximity...
Joe, could you get closer to your mic?
The closed proximity...
To the miniature golf. There're going to be kids and everything, you know, small kids, you know, playing games and stuff like that and having a good time.
There will be a monitor. I apologize for interrupting you, Mr. Kirkland. There will be a monitor. There will be non-borough, non-carousel employees who will be doing the serving and the monitoring as well, so that there's no mingling of the employees in a situation like that. They'll be responsible for the serving of non-intoxicated individuals, similar to any type of bar setting whatsoever. I do understand what you are worried about or concerns about. There is going to be some discussion at a later date as to if we're approved, and if this is approved for not only for the new restaurant slash liquor license, but also the renovations, there is going to be an issue as to how far you would allow or to what extent you allow the serving. I would, I think that we're going to have to discuss, and I'm going to be open with you, we're going to have to discuss location, time of day, and who is going to monitor. Those are three things that come to my head right away, and I'm more than happy to address that once we get to the next step.
Anyone else?
Yes. I have a problem with alcohol and the carousel because you have a vehicle in there that spins, you have people that are drinking, and to me, it's a recipe for disaster. And it, I mean, I understand you have the carousel, but we also, we are the owners of the building, we lease you the building, and it doesn't take much for someone to get hurt. And when you add alcohol to the picture, I think it's not, I don't think it's a good thing. And it's also supposed to be a family venue, so I don't know why we have to have alcohol in, with the family and children and that type of thing. I just, I don't understand.
Can I ask one thing?
And I understand it's going to be a restaurant and everything there, but I don't feel the alcohol and the carousel are a good mix.
Presently, there is alcohol that is presented at the carousel on events. So people do drink and participate. We've never had a problem with anybody getting sick, being disruptive, having to call the Pottstown Police for somebody being disruptive. We actually had, we've had numerous events. I think that we're going to total over 100 events during the last 12 months, and at no time during those 100 events have we ever had any type of disruption, public disorderly issue, or any type of intoxication level that someone from a party, whether it's an engagement party, a wedding party, a sweet 16 party, a graduation party, or even a kids' party where the adults would like to drink as a toast to the kids. But we have never had that issue. So on one hand, I understand what you're saying, but the other hand is we are already having parties that have alcohol there. For no, at no time, if this is approved, at no time will there be any type of vulnerability or issue for the borough or even the carousel to be subjected to any type of lawsuit. Again, that will be through the triple net lease agreement that we have with the restaurant. There'll be a requirement for sufficient insurance, and there'll be a whole harmless agreement with regard to any and all liquor sales and intoxication. So I appreciate what you're saying. Carousel really doesn't go that fast. People can spin a little bit faster than they actually, the carousel will ride. Carousel operators control the carousel as well. They are trained thoroughly. They don't obviously partake in any type of alcoholic beverages. We have many volunteers who aid the carousel. I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, I can pinpoint different areas in Pottstown where we have dancing, you can spin and dancing. We have alcoholic beverages in an open area called the alley right now, which they're doing very well. I heard the mayor. I was there on Saturday night, I couldn't believe how packed it was. People are dancing, people are having fun, people are throwing the cornhole games, people are going back and forth with the music. I think that, I don't want to say that you're overexcited with regard to the possibility, but I think that there's going to be enough protection if, if, and I emphasize word "if", there is ever a problem, which I don't foresee.
If I may, oh, sorry, not that I have a vote or anything, but if I may, I think this is a fabulous idea. Since the carousel opened, I've been saying this all along, have a restaurant, have people come as a family, kids can ride the carousel, you're bringing in more business. They're not asking to do anything that they haven't already been doing. So I don't think there's any worry of people getting out of hand with alcohol flowing. I would anticipate it's just like a normal restaurant. Frankly, I haven't seen anyone be out of hand with alcohol at any of the establishments in Pottstown. But, you know, when it's going to happen, it's when Disney princesses are going to be there.
I stay with that.
But I think that...
I think that there's going to be another level of cushion, if I may, as well, because not only do we have the protection from a restaurant and their recognition of what is right and what is wrong, as well as their vulnerability to any type of lawsuit on their end, but that's more of a protection than what we have presently, which is you can bring in your own alcohol through the entertainment license that the carousel has.
So I was there Saturday. I think there was a wedding. I just wanted to check to see how they did after the flooding. Because when, after the flooding, their gift shop was not working. So I went in there, they had the gift shop and everything, the wooden floors is tore up, they got the, now that all the floors look like, but they had a wedding, and I was like, oh, I'm sorry, I'm here for the wedding. So I peeped in, and they was having a good time, you know, in there. And you could see they had alcohol there, and they had the gifts, and I seen the wedding party and stuff, and they was having fun, you know, and some people was on the carousel, the place was closed. So, and I agree with the mayor. The alley is doing a wonderful job. I was there, I seen the mayor there this weekend, and they have kids at the alley, there's alcohol, there's dogs, there's no cats though, but there's, you know, there's, I mean, it's in diversity. And that's what, I mean, it's there at the alley, so I mean, I don't see any reason why I'm not at the carousel. But I did have a question about the transfer. Why are we transferring from one place? I don't understand that part.
I'll try to do it as best as I can. I'll defer to your solicitor if I miss.
Sorry. I don't know what transfer means.
Transfer from one entity that is open in Montgomery County that is either closed or the license became available for some other means.
Oh, okay.
Can now be transferred to another location in Montgomery County.
Okay, okay.
So what the process is, if, once the transfer is approved by the borough, that license still has to be obtained, and that's through the Liquor Control Board.
Okay, so it's like an open license?
It's a bid process, yeah.
I agree with Carl. We have enough restaurants, we have enough places that we can drink. Why combine the carousel that's supposed to be for kids, not to get drunk? That's my opinion.
Can I just tell you one thing? I actually, anybody who knows me, and not many know me that well in this room that I see, but people know me, I have had the pleasure of growing up in this area. I've literally known Ginny my entire life through my grandfather, and she knew my grandfather. And I have seen as a little boy the wonderful ability that the town offered, the borough offered, when we had so many different stores. I remember Milton's as a little boy, obviously Weisenkorn's as a little boy. And then we had the Down problem, the mall was built, and the Country Mall was built, we had some closing of shops. And I'm a half-empty type of guy most of the time. I'm usually a pessimist, but I've had the pleasure of being asked to be a member of the board, and I was really one of those naysayers saying, why do we need a carousel? And I don't know what else I could say but what you said earlier, which was, it's community. And when I heard the mayor talk about A, B, C, D, it must have gone on for at least until the letter L or M. Of all the events that we've had, not only within the last week, but what we have in the future, it shows promise, and that's what we need in this community. We need promise, we need hope, togetherness, we need a community-based program. I know what has happened recently with all of that. I've read recently the issues that the borough has faced. I know the monetary issues, the problems that the borough faces with regard to all finances, but at the same time, let's not bite the hand that feeds you as well. We're trying to our hardest, and for, Emre, that I've known you as well, I don't want to say shame on you to make that stance, that's your own stance, I appreciate it, but of all people, you know what groups can come in and what communities can be. And for us to be a community-based function, and for us to say, welcome to our new area, at the same time, I hear the mayor saying, look at downtown Pottstown, and it's all walking area. You can literally walk from the carousel all the way to the alley, and you won't be out of breath. And in the meantime, you can actually stop at several restaurants. But at the same time, isn't that what we want? This is not going to be, and I will tell you right now, and you can quote me, Evan, you can quote me. You can quote me. Thank you, Evan. You can quote me. This is not going to be another pizza restaurant. This is not going to be another quick, fast-food restaurant. We don't need that, folks. This is going to be maybe a tapas, small-plate idea, where, as the mayor said, you can have a tapas dinner or a few plates with your kids, or you're on a date, or just going out by yourself. And then you can play a round of mini golf, and then you come back in, and then you can have dessert through the tapas, and then you can watch your kids go on the carousel. And in the meantime, you're giving to the community, you're spending money in the community, and most importantly, you're having fun. And that's what we're trying to do. So please don't bite the hand that feeds you. We're also trying to really help the community, and that's what we stand for. All we're trying to do is renovate. I think we did a pretty good job. I thank Michael, I thank the council for allowing us to take the step forward. We did some renovations, we got our feet wet with the mini golf this year. We plan a lot more changes to the mini golf course next year, which goes hand-in-hand with our ideas with the renovation. So all we're asking to do is give us a chance, just like you gave everybody else a chance. I would think they would want a community-based area that can have large functions, and you won't shut us down, just like you allowed an alleyway to change and transform into this beautiful area where people in the good weather can enjoy a fun night, family-wise.
I take my kids to the alley all the time, I never had any...
No problem.
And the Colbrook Railroad.
Adam, are there, can you name some similar facilities in the area? I know there's, you know, that have, you know, family activities or sports-type activities and also alcohol. I mean, I think Arnold's might be one. There's a place in Reading that's similar.
The axe-throwing down the street is a family activity.
And there's only like axe...
No, no, but I mean, something that's like...
Dave and Buster's.
Yeah, like a, yeah, like Dave and Buster's.
David Buster. Yeah, so that's good, that's a good one. Dave and Buster's.
The Works.
Like rainforest trapping, do you still have that?
You had that, by the way, you actually kind of had that to a degree with Sunnybrook back in the day. You had the whole development. I know that Sunnybrook has changed dramatically, but there are also, if you go into Reading area, there are also many golf courses that allow alcohol to be served, limited alcohol to be served as well. But I think Dave and Buster's and The Works are absolutely prime examples of what we have in our area. It's something new for Pottstown as well. So can I continue? I'll just, I'm going very briefly as you... I'm sorry.
One question. You mentioned the 100 events you've had in the past year where alcohol was served and the like. So you've had access to it.
Yes.
Demonstrates that. Explain why the need for having a license. What advantage does that give you, give the town, give the...
It's a completely different liquor license. This would be a restaurant liquor license. We have an entertainment license.
Right, so since you've had access to alcoholic beverage for the past 100 events, what's the advantage of having the license?
Well, we would create a restaurant, which would have the power to use that liquor license. Otherwise, you're having the entertainment license, and the restaurant would not be able to use it. It would be a dry restaurant at that point in time. So it's going to be the same type of end component, but at the same time, it's going to be a restaurant that can use a liquor license for its own service.
Okay, to sell to the public as opposed to just use for the private party?
For that one particular occasion, absolutely. So, I'm sorry, are there any others before I, and I'm going to be very brief about the renovations. I'm not here to get a rubber stamp. I just want to give an idea. If you recall, I did appear in council, before council, in October of last year with Jim Arms, even idea as to what we would like. I did drop off, I have another copy of the proposed renovations, and that's what they are right now. We're pretty close to getting a final set of drawings for a review by council. A couple of points. Number one, I do want to thank Keith Place. He's been a lifeline help with regard to helping as to getting to the next step, the step that I'm before the council tonight, telling us what we can and cannot do, because as the council may know, we are facing a flood plain area, so we have to develop the proposal within that envelope that was pre-existing so that we don't go outside that envelope, and we get a nasty preempt from FEMA or a stop and cease, indecisive letter from FEMA as well. So there is a couple of changes. Keith was gracious enough to point out the problems, and we're going to go forward with the changes. The changes are not dramatic or material. They're going to, again, it's on the south side of the building where the bump out would be toward the grassy area again for the proposed restaurant, the window, you have a seating area, all in that grassy area. We were going to make it into, for lack of a better term, a rectangular... a better term, a rectangular structure. So it would go up where the walkway is, the current walkway, leading to High Street and to the mini golf. We're going to have to go around the frame of the building. And I think that the only change is going to be the walk-in refrigeration for the proposed restaurant. That's not going to be a major change. Trucks, delivery people can still come up to that area and just drop off. It's not going to be a major issue. So the idea is not only this large commissary, large kitchen, it's also expanding the area inside and using the structure itself for the best use available. We are not proposing going out of the four corners, except for that little bump out that I just described for the, for the kitchen area. On the far east side, which used to be a garage back in the day, and one of the neatest things, I'll put this before you, one of the neatest things is that we have pictures, little museum area where in the back that you can see the old garage area. And there's one car in one of the photos that we have, and Chuck, you'll enjoy this one. The one person who's in that car, in that picture is my grandfather, which I, I love seeing every single time that we go there. So it used to be a little garage area. That garage has mysteriously disappeared over the years and there's no, no longer that area. We are not going to try to recreate that area. We're not going into that area. You're approaching the FEMA area at that point in time. So we're going to go inside the structure. We're going to have proposal for steel-based mezzanine that will be curved from the area close to the King Street side all the way toward overlooking the carousel. Upstairs will be office areas, conference areas, bathroom, service areas for the restaurant. If you have a group, you can go upstairs. For those who are unable to go upstairs, there'll be two sets of stairs for safety purposes. For those who are not going to be able to go upstairs, we can hold more than happy to hold events downstairs in the existing area, which will be expanded because we're going to get rid of the bathroom area. That will give us more room. Bathrooms will be changed to the eastern side of the building. You will have a seating area. The seating area will be able to be divided so that you can have a restaurant, you can have a private party, and you can have a meeting all at one time. So again, people who may not be able to be physically able to go upstairs and have a meeting, you're going to be able to conduct it downstairs, private, no issues, same situation. So those are the major bump outs. We're also going to have the seating area, as I told council Kirkland about. That's going to be two half walls, one on the east side, one on the west side. On the western side, it's going to be attached to the walkway, the existing walkway that leads from the carousel to the mini golf, so that you don't have to go in the grassy area and then go onto pavers. Half-wall seating area. The first half wall on the western side would be a water feature, a little three sets, a set of three waterfall that people can sit down on both sides of the water, look inside the carousel so you can look at what's going on, or look at the mini golf and watch people play mini golf. You have now the 10 to 12 walkway, foot walkway between the one half wall, leading to the other circle. The first circle is approximately 20 by 20. Second circle, which is going to be closer to the proposed kitchen and service area, is going to be 25 by 25. Again, a half wall, sit by, this will be a fire feature, a fire feature that we can control, not using real wood, of course, a kid-friendly fire feature. So people can enjoy the early fall evenings, maybe a cold summer evening, and again, sit on the one side, enjoy the carousel, sit on the other side, and enjoy the mini golf. That's where we are. I, I would invite you to come out and look at it. We have the plans. I'll leave a set of plans here. I would love if you invite me to come back, probably next month, and I will be able to, at that point in time, provide you with a plan for your review, final review. Questions?
No, but maybe we could just wrap things up since we heard a lot tonight. The way I view it, there's really three issues that, that need to be discussed with council, but the most pressing is the, the fact that we had the public hearing, that council will need to make some determination as to whether or not they wish to approve the transfer of the license. That's, that's the first thing and that's really the only thing that I think is ready to be listed for, for Monday evening if you choose to do that. The other two things that Mr. Sager described are functions of the fact that you own this building. So the plans that he has and will, he will be submitting, you as the property owner will ultimately have to review and approve those because they're changes to your building. So that will happen in due course and when we get formal plans submitted, it'll go through the regular process. And you as the property owner will have the ultimate say as to whether or not you allow that. So that'll happen. The, the final step, at least I see, and maybe there's, there's more than three, is the discussion about the restaurant and the fact that since you own the building, you'll have to modify the lease agreement with the carousel in order to allow all this to happen. So you're, you're looking at this as the municipality from the sense of the liquor license transfer, but you're looking at it from the property owner's standpoint, since you own the building, for renovations to your building and ultimate revisions to the lease to allow this restaurant, which will be a subtenant of yours, and you'll have to approve all that. So this is all going to take some time. But I think it was important for council to hear the overall concept of the carousel in conjunction with the liquor license transfer. So the only thing that it's immediate is, is the license transfer and the other things will fall into place and you'll decide whether they're worthy of your consideration or how you want to handle it. So I'm happy to answer any questions if, if you have any from a procedural nature as far as how we're going to move forward. Did I mistake anything?
Absolutely not.
All right.
With your approval, I'm just going to leave this with Ginny and if anybody wants another plan, I'll be more happy to provide it. Obviously, again, it's not the final proposed plan because we have to work around that one issue for the FEMA.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now for clarification.
Thank you.
The license will transfer from the existing owner to the restaurant or to the carousel?
Well, well, right, right now, the way that I understand it, it's the carousel of Pottstown and Rocky Centrino are the applicant. So presuming you allow the transfer into the borough, that doesn't mean you allow it necessarily into your building. So, so that's going to be a separate step, which makes this a little bit unusual. You did a similar thing when you allowed the license to transfer for the Blue Elephant.
Right.
At that point, you weren't the building owner, so you had no further say. But in this case, you're simply allowing the transfer, assuming the license is purchased through the LCB. The carousel and Mr. Centrino would be the owners of the license, but you would still have to grant them permission to use it in your building. So again, that's another step that would not be necessarily anything you would approve Monday night. You would just approve the actual transfer from Lower Gwinnett to Pottstown, Montgomery County. So that's all you would be doing.
Okay.
Thank you very much, council. I appreciate the time.
So if there's nothing else, we'll list that for Monday evening.
So I'm here to, hear me all right. I'm here tonight to talk to you briefly about the Pottstown area regional recreation committee, some changes that we see ahead with that program and to ask for one action item, which would be to allow the solicitor to look at a document for future approval. So I'm not asking for any approvals tonight, just authorization for the solicitor to review the document. So I'll give you a little background on Park to refresh you and then talk about the changes that are moving forward. So Pottstown area regional recreation committee is part of a five-year program that was funded with the DCNR grant. It started in 2014 with money from the DCNR, Pottstown area health and wellness, and contributions from the municipalities participating. We started a collaborative program where we have a grant writer that works for us that's currently positioned staffed by Michael Lane, working out of the SRGA building. He writes grants for us. He's been very successful in the past. You can see at the bottom of the slide the listed participants in that. So six municipalities started that. It's a five-year program. We're coming to the end of that five-year program. Let's see, it would have been, I believe it was earlier this year or late last year, you voted on a funding resolution to extend that program. So that has been completed. The borough is already committed by resolution to the extension of that five-year program. We're talking about a minor change to how that group will work. Currently, we are a subcommittee of the PMR PC. Park is a subcommittee of PMR PC. The county has suggested that we should move beyond that to become a organization unto ourselves. And the way you would do that would be with an intergovernmental cooperative agreement. So that's an agreement signed by all the participants. And once all participants sign that document, we would be independent of PMR PC. A little bit more on that later. Let's get ahead here. Talking about the merits of the program, you can see the, the program has been quite successful. Pottstown Borough, specifically to date, $395,500 in grants through this program. So again, we, or I should say, you authorized a funding resolution for an additional five years. At that time, we were also able to add a seventh participant. That's East Coventry. So we're in a very good position to move this forward. That's why the county said this intergovernmental cooperative agreement would be to our benefit. So with respect to that agreement, it must be adopted by ordinance. So that would be something coming along later. There's a sample ordinance, a sample language for that, that was given to you with that. Now, it's just a sample. It's nothing that's being moved on tonight. Again, the only thing we're asking for is for the solicitor to review the document that we would be asking you to sign at a later date. The purpose of Park will remain the same. Really what is, is going to be opened up by this is that we will have ability as Park to apply for grants independently. So right now, the borough can apply for grants and that's great. Another participating municipalities can apply for grants. That's great. Park can apply for their own grants in addition to that through this organization. That's probably the primary benefit of this and that's the, the thing that we look forward to the most. So it's, it's providing regional cooperation at a different level through the creation of this cooperative agency and opening up some additional funding avenues for us. The caveat that's important to this is that the, the document that we're looking at, it is only valid and this can only be completed if all agencies sign the same document with the same language. So we're not asking for any additions to this because that would be a very complicated process if you ask all, you know, seven cooks to enter the kitchen and add their own ingredients. We've kept the language of that agreement therefore quite, it's not overly complicated, I should say. The, the governing procedures for that organization, once it's formed, they would be covered in a separate set of procedures. The basic of how we cooperate is covered in that document. Didn't make it too specific so that it does not invite any changes. That's the very quick version of it. So just to reiterate, asking for permission for the solicitor to review that, to see if it is agreeable, and then action would be asked in the future for adopting it by ordinance. Simultaneously, the rest of the PARRC municipalities, including North Coventry, the Pottsgroves, Douglas, they are all following the same routes, going to their elected bodies to ask for their permission. I hope that was thoroughly covered and quickly, so I would open it up to any questions you have. All right, thank you.
There's no action for this one?
There, there is a resolution for this for Monday night, correct?
You have the resolution?
Uh, no, the, the resolution is a sample resolution. The only action we're asking for is to allow the solicitor review the language of the intergovernmental cooperation agreement. And if you choose to move forward, it will require an ordinance to be advertised in order you, for you to approve it. So there can be no, no formal action other than authorization to move forward.
Correct.
All right. So we can list that for Monday?
Yes.
Okay. So Jenny, if you'll list that for Monday?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. How about a bike race? Ms. Gulick?
Hello.
Good evening. My name's Dawn. This is Colleen. And we came here to just kind of give you a summary of the event and to make ourselves available to you for any feedback. Kind of, kind of disappear after an event and, you know, if people don't know how to connect with you if you have any comments or suggestions. We had over 300 racers with significant others and families come to the east end of Pottstown this year. And there was overwhelming positive accolades about the new course and, and just the environment in general. Heat was a little challenging. Last year, we were wet with rain. This year, we were wet with sweat. But nonetheless, we, no pun intended, weathered through it. We, we had a little bit of challenges in the beginning to kind of win over the community with the respect to, of the bike, the bike race being different than the bike path. And I think that we were successful. I think that we not only had people that came out on the day of the race to be marshals, but they supplied water to the racers. They even put up an inflatable pool. They're talking next year about wanting to put up sprinkler systems and have block parties. I've got plenty of phone numbers and emails from residents asking to contact them next year for being marshals in the race course and, and helping out. Many people were very complimentary of us sweeping the streets. We put down over 500 pounds of patch on the roads, which as you know, road, bike tires, car tires, a little bit different. But the residents were, were very complimentary of that. I would want to actually also thank the police department. Corporal Long was absolutely stellar. His, his forethought into road closures and signage was just impeccable and we can't do that without him. In addition, ambulance crew, what a great group. We're really lucky to have such a very talented group. Not only managing the heat, we had no hospital transports as a result of the heat because of them intervening collectively. We had three crashes on the day of the race and the outcomes were absolutely wonderful, again, because of them intervening. So we made a personal delivery to the, the ambulance people and had conversations with them after the event because it, it could not have gone better. We're here, like I said, to make ourselves available to you for feedback. I'm sure people always have suggestions. We're humble enough to realize that we can always make this better. But, you know, I, I think Justin, you know, we were a bit resistant to wanting to move it out of the downtown borough and moving it to the east end. And the reality is, it worked great. So, you know, sometimes careful what you wish for, right? I guess, I thought, open it to you guys for comments. We would, with your blessing, like to be back in January after we know from USA Cycling and the Pennsylvania Cycling Association if the date that we typically get in July is possible. Okay? We have to negotiate those every year and kind of lobby for those. That's actually Colleen's job. She does all the, I do the town stuff. She does all the race stuff. So that's how we divide and conquer.
So you're happy with the east end of town and wouldn't consider coming back?
I'm sorry, sir?
You're happy with the east end of town and wouldn't consider coming back to the?
Road conditions are wonderful. The racers loved the course. That little chicane in the back, you know, going from under Rosedale, they loved that. They thought the people in the, in the area were very receptive, very encouraging, you know. There were several people that had little parties set up, little pools going on, you know, inviting them over for, you know, they're literally going by and the people are saying, you know, stop by for a beer when you're done. And they sure did. It helped that there were a few women in bikinis in the little, in the pool too, but that was a whole other issue.
Right? No comments, no questions? Thank you.
Hey, thanks so much.
See you next year.
Okay. Our municipal solid wage services, you going to review the bids?
Yeah. So we're, we're still in the process of analyzing these, but I think we have a pretty good handle on what we've gotten back so far. So the bids were, were open. We had two bidders propose. One is JP Mascara, who is our current hauler, and the other one is, is waste management. We had the bid structured, structured in a variety of, of different ways to give us as many options as, as possible. So bidders bid on both a three-year and a five-year contract. They also bid on whether or not bulk items would be picked up once per month or once per week, one item, once per week or one item, once, once per month. That is something new that we don't have right now. They also bid on replacing all the red toders by the end of the contract as well. So, it's a lot of different information to go through, and we'll provide all that to you. But essentially, I think what everyone is most concerned about is how is this going to impact the average residential trash bill? So, with Mascaro, under a three-year contract with weekly bulk pickup, the increase per quarter per resident, or per trash unit would be ten dollars and thirty-two cents. For a five-year contract with the weekly bulk, it would be an addition of ten dollars and sixty cents per quarter. Waste Management, for three-year collections with the tipping fee and the weekly bulk pickup, it would be eleven dollars and ninety-one cents per quarter increase. For a five-year contract with the same items included, it would be twelve dollars and twelve cent increase per quarter. So, those are the two, the two options that we have. It would appear that Mascaro is indeed the low bidder for this service. And at this point, I can open it up, any questions anyone might have?
I have a question. Will the trash and water still be together? If so, you know, billing-wise? If so, why? Why are we having it together? Why can't Mascaro? Am I saying that right? Mascaro? I feel like it's like Mascaro.
Yeah, so that wasn't Mascaro, so that wasn't included, that wasn't included in this bill. They would, there would be a charge for them to do that. It would likely, I mean, in initial conversations with them, it would increase our bill by, you know, a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars a year to include that in there. And the reality is, is that the borough is still going to have to deal with a lot of the trash issues anyway, in order to get, in order to work with Mascaro to get them resolved. I think that you've seen some improvements over the past couple of months. There were some different approaches that we took with them that seemed to have worked. So, that is the reason why it's included on the utility bill.
Yes, my problem is, when they don't pick up my trash, I can't short them. Because if I short them, then I short my water bill, and then now I'm homeless, because they put lean on my house.
So, the problem is that we can't, we can't refuse trash pickup. So, if you stop, if you stop paying and they stop picking up, then we have an issue. The borough, legally, we can't provide trash service.
Right, I understand. But when they miss my trash, like, they miss the whole block, especially, maybe in the wintertime, it won't be so bad, but in the summer, there's flies and flies...
Right.
And the trash stink, and you call them, and they don't pick up the trash, there's a problem.
So, what we've, what we have built into this contract as well is an incremental penalty system for missed pickups or for improper can placements. So, they get a series of escalating fines for each missed pickup or each missed placement. Of course, we're not falling around, so the residents have to report that to us for us to be able to turn that fine over back to them. If they get, if they have three instances of that, they stay at the highest fine level for a period of six months. They have to go six months without any mess-ups before we would reduce that, take away that fine.
Do you implement that at the beginning of, when the staff people complain, you implement that already?
No.
This is new.
Yeah, this would be, this would be new.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
This would be new going forward. What we implemented now is better monitoring of them when they're out, when they're out in the street.
Is this working?
Checking up on them, making sure that they're not missing things, going around at the end of the day, making sure that they've hit everything. We only had to do that for a couple of weeks before they got the message, and we're not doing it anymore, because obviously, we don't really have the staff resources to follow them around.
I was going to say, where are we getting the staff from? We don't have no money.
But I think it did correct the issue, and then having the penalties in place going forward will help as well.
Do you want to tell them, we also requested that they have a supervisor within the borough every day during pickup?
Yes, that's, that is in the, in the contract, correct, Doug?
Yes. Supervisor?
Yeah, so they're required to have a route supervisor in the truck, or in the borough, every day there's a pickup. And that person is, that person is required to make sure that they're hitting all their pickups, they're putting all the cans back in the right place, so it's somebody that can be held accountable.
Yeah, because a couple times, it's the driver and one person.
Right, that's, yeah, that's what that is, that's the supervisor.
Yeah, yeah, because they are very sloppy when it comes down to the trash cans. They are in front of the cars, excuse me, they're in front of cars, they all, you know, so when you pull up to go park, you gotta get out your car and move the trash can. And I had got complaints, because some people were handicapped, they put them right there in the handicap, in people's parking spot.
I think it might be wise, if we let all the councilors read the additions to the contract, just to see what you've implemented. I think we've made it rather strict, and not just for one company, but for any company bidding on this. Due to the past results we've had the last six months, and I know my fifth ward was, had as many complaints probably as any.
So, that was the other thing, too, is going to, in both these contracts, there are options for renewals for two years, on the five-year or the three-year. So, if you go with the three-year, and the company isn't performing up to your expectations, you would only have to deal with that for three years, and then you could move on to someone else.
At this time, I just beat Waste Management, right? Like, Whitetail and some of the other companies either didn't bid, or they're too small to handle us?
Yeah, we really worked hard to reach out, and we worked with an ad hoc trash committee of the Pottstown Housing Coalition to reach out to all the trash haulers that we could, including, you know, Whitetail and Blazinski and others that I'm probably not recalling at the moment. And we did actually have some of them at our pre-bid meeting as well. So, there was interest there, but not enough interest at the end of the day for them to put in a bid.
What exactly are the rules as far as picking the low bidder? Do we have to pick the low bidder?
We have to pick the lowest responsible bidder.
We have to pick the low bidder?
Yes, you have to, Mr. Corporal.
Okay, because, I mean, looking at it per resident, I mean, it's going to raise anyway, right? It's going to, it's going to, it's going to cost more.
Yeah.
Either way.
Yeah, about, yeah.
So...
Either it's, you know, basically...
Looking at the ten thirty-two as opposed...
It's going to be forty dollars more, approximately forty dollars more per year for Mascaro, and fifty dollars more per year, approximately, for Waste Management.
Okay, if I'm, I guess I'm not reading this right, it's ten thirty-two for Mascaro, right?
A quarter.
A quarter, right.
More.
And as opposed to eleven ninety-one?
Correct.
So, the difference between the two is like a dollar sixty-something cents?
A quarter, yeah.
Right, a quarter.
A quarter.
So, we have to pick them, because the dollar sixty-something cents, we gotta pick, we gotta pick the lower bidder.
And why do we have to? Why we have to pick the low bidder?
That's the requirements of the state law. The state legislature has determined that when you have a competitive bid process, you're required to award the bid to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and your bid documents need to be objective into what qualifies as responsive and responsible. So, presuming that the bidders complied with the requirements that you've put out, and presuming they've presented all the documentation you requested, and there is no basis to find them unqualified in your bid documents, you have no choice but to award it to the lowest responsible bidder.
Did they know who, did they know before, before they did the bidding? Who is, they know each other, how much they're going to bid each other?
No.
No.
They're all sealed bids, and frankly, based upon the pre-bid meeting, there were a number of contractors that were present, so we actually anticipated receiving bids from more than just the two. We were hoping to get, you know, four or five contractors to bid, and ultimately, when the bids were open, we only had bids from Mascaro and Waste Management. So, those were the only two contractors that entered bids based upon our request.
I just find it difficult to accept the fact that we, well, I guess the law's the law, but the fact that, you know, considering the complaints that we get all the time, that we have, we have to choose them.
You know, the amount of money that they owe the borough for the amount of missed trash, like, I reported at least ten, ten weeks. That more than makes up for the difference between Mascaro and Waste Management of the quarter.
Correct.
So, why can't that, why doesn't that show that they're unqualified in their bidding process?
I guess we don't know for sure if Waste Management would be better.
Also, stick with, just stick with that quote, just because...
JP Mascaro III. JP Mascaro III, if I may, just for one second. I've heard all of your concerns. Obviously, we've been in the borough for a long time, we've been here since 2006. I'm not disputing the fact that this year has been a challenge, not only for us, but the entire industry as a whole. Quite frankly, it's been the most challenging year in the waste industry as a whole that we've ever seen. Tremendous shortage of driver, labor, pools, et cetera, et cetera. That's not to make excuses, we service over a hundred municipalities in Pennsylvania. Unfortunately, Pottstown happens to be one of four that we've had some issues in. We've worked with staff to get things under control, we've added additional labor, additional supervision to the contract, and we're prepared to move forward to, back to the service levels that we have provided to the borough in the past. I do hear your concerns in terms of the various issues, and trust me, we're committed to Pottstown, and we're committed to this community getting things back to where they were for many years and moving forward. Not to belittle the money difference, but if you take the bids as a whole, the difference between the Waste Management bid and our bid is well in excess of a million dollars over the life of the contract, so it's not as little a dollar amount as they seem.
Right, I understand that, I'm just, yeah.
So, that being said...
We break it down, that's what comes out to the resident, when you break it down.
I understand, but it is a significant amount of money, so I, you know, and obviously, your solicitor discussed the various legal challenges and legal issues with bidding process in that, but that being said, we are committed to the borough, and we are committed to doing a good job here, and committed to getting this thing back on track. We have, I think, for the recent, the recent past, gotten things back to a good state, and we're going to continue that way.
Okay, I would ask you to hold right there. We understand your concern, and now that we have your quotes recorded, both visually and I'm sure Evan has his notes on that, we'd like to continue on this among the council, and what I'd like to do is make each counselor feel satisfied with what staff has done in negotiating this contract. So, if Evan, if you can make available to each of the councilors what it is we're asking for, what they have agreed to, and make sure that we have covered all our concerns. I know my ward, we had many challenges in the last six months.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand, and I'm available for any questions, answering my, for anybody.
All right, fine, thank you.
Thank you.
So, they can each get a copy?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we can't answer all your questions tonight.
It's a lot of information.
But for each of you, in your own ward, take a look at the contract, and you know the concerns that you heard from your constituents, make sure we have covered their tales. Okay? So, there's nothing we need to do Monday or on this?
You're not required to, at some point, you're going to have to take action on the bids. You have time, you can wait till October, or you can make a conditional award Monday night, it's entirely up to you.
Yeah, between now and Monday, we'll get those copies out to them.
Yep, I'll get them out tomorrow.
All right, and we'll list it.
I just have a question, is there going to be a recommendation coming from staff as to whether it's a three-year, five-year, what is, what is the...
Yeah.
Somebody has to make a recommendation, I believe, to borough council, so they have some idea of exactly what they're awarding. It was, there are various options here. Doug, you wrote a number of options, so I would think it would be very beneficial to council to have staff come up with their recommendation as to the options to be awarded in the three or five years, obviously a significant difference. So, again, we just, we're just seeing this this evening, and the paperwork was literally at our spots tonight, so I haven't had a chance to really look at anything, nor have I looked at any of the bid submissions.
Is there a law for three-year or five-year? Does it have to be three-year, five-year? Can it be one-year?
There's no law, but it was put out, the bids were written for a three or five year, so that's what you have. If you wanted a one-year, that would have had to have been prepared in the bid documents as another option, but that's what was prepared and submitted.
Okay.
Okay, listed in between, after you've received your copies and reviewed them, please get back to our borough manager with your concerns, and Monday, we'll decide whether or not we want to take action.
Yeah, we'll have a recommendation on the preferred structure of the contract as well, Monday night.
Okay. Okay, miscellaneous ordinance amendments.
Yeah, I can start, Chuck can fill in. So, these were the ordinance amendments, some of which you've seen before, some which you haven't. We're asking for your consideration to... Are we going for advertisement or for all of these, to advertise all of these ordinance? So, the first one would be the elimination of zoning requirements for downtown off-street Committee believes that the downtown is essentially built out, and the uses are struggling to identify sufficient off-street parking to meet the ordinance's minimum standards. So, it results in an influx of variance applications, and it limits some of the development, specifically some of the mixed-use development where there's commercial with apartments above, because we do currently have a requirement of two parking spaces for every apartment unit. So, that's one. Also, the second one would be to exempt owner-occupied residential properties from obtaining a master plumber requirement. You would still be required to get a permit, but if you are in a single family or duplex, you would be able to do your own plumbing work, because essentially, if something were to go wrong, or be done, installed incorrectly, you're damaging your own property, you're not damaging your neighbors or a party wall or anything like that. So, we think that's a common sense solution that'll make it easier for people to do their own work, plumbing work. Also, looking at revisions to triggers of grading and stormwater permit requirements, looking at reducing, or increasing the grading permits to be required for land disturbance impacting areas in excess of five hundred feet. So, currently, it's one hundred feet, and then also requiring a stormwater management plan for earth disturbance at fifteen hundred square feet. Currently, it's an acre. And then also, we have the revisions to swimming pool regulations in the downtown, or not in the downtown, for borough-wide. So, it would create definitions for in-ground, above-ground, and storable swimming pools, and it would reduce setbacks for storable swimming pools. And I think that for, with the exception of elimination of zoning requirements... the exception of elimination of zoning requirements and the grading permits, staff would be willing to recommend forwarding the other two for advertisement regarding the swimming pools and owner-occupied. But I would suggest that council takes additional look at the elimination of downtown off-street parking. While I think we need to look at it for a certain threshold of residential uses, I don't know that it can be applied broad, broad brush for, for all residential uses. If there were to be a, you know, a 20-unit apartment building that were, that was to go in, I'm not sure that you wouldn't want some level of parking requirement for that. But if that's not a concern, we can, you know, we can, we can look at that. But I would suggest that, that we look at that one a little closely, a little more closely. And also for the grading, grading permits, we're, we currently are working with the county to do a parcel size and impervious cover analysis on that. And we haven't gotten back all the results from that at this point. And I think there needs to be a little more work done because there's, there's a lot of different conditions throughout the borough, small parcels, large parcels, their location and proximity to the downtown that I'm not sure that a blanket grading permit requirement really is going to cover all properties uniformly.
You want to take that back to committee?
That's, that's, that's up for councils to decide, but that would be my, my recommendation.
Okay. There are no questions. We'll list this for Monday and act accordingly.
Can I ask a question on that? It's Mary Paul Ornette. I didn't see a separate definition in the code for hot tubs and I had to make sure that hot tubs are not considered swimming pools under, sorry, but if it's 24 inches of water, if you're going to have, if that would fit within the definition, you're requiring someone to construct a fence around the hot tub? I just want to make sure because it's not.
Good point.
I could find it in the code and I didn't know if under the definition of pool is hot tub.
Keith, you want to speak to that, please?
What you're talking about right now is we're talking about zoning definitions. A hot tub doesn't fall under the zoning definition. It falls under the building code. So there is requirements under the building code, the residential building code, it references to hot tubs as far as barriers, covers, lids and safety features.
It's just part of, if you look at the index of our code and you look under the word, it doesn't point you anywhere in the code. So, thank you.
So, so just for clarification, these recommendations for ordinance changes emanated through the ad hoc zoning ordinance review committee. They had been discussed by council for a number of months and last month you had given us the authority to put together the actual ordinance changes so you could look at them. As Justin said, we're really looking at two separate ordinances that you had in your packet. One is zoning in nature by definition of the swimming pools and the swimming pool regulations. Also in that zoning ordinance change had to do with the elimination of any parking, minimum parking requirements in the downtown. So, so those, those are in one zoning ordinance amendment and I'm hearing that there is some concern about the elimination of all parking requirements downtown.
True.
So in my opinion, it doesn't make sense to bifurcate this and do a swimming pool zoning ordinance amendment, only to come back a month later and do a parking ordinance. So, so if, if there's concern that council has with respect to the content of any zoning-related ordinance, we'd like to bundle that together in the future so we're not having a public hearing every month and, and duplicating advertising and public hearing costs. The second ordinance was really a regulatory ordinance related to the master plumber requirement, which came out of ad hoc, and the potential changes to the threshold for grading permits as well as stormwater management. In one case, it's becoming more liberal. In one case, it's becoming more conservative. So that doesn't require public hearing. It still requires advertisement. So if, I guess between now and Monday, we could just kind of put our fingers on exactly what you think is ready and what you don't think is ready and then we can figure out the best way to advertise them to save money. So we're not, you know, doing ordinances every month. So that's kind of where we are if anybody asks questions and, and I don't know if it should go back to the ad hoc or it needs more council discussion.
Yes.
But we would, we would like, I mean, it helps our office to kind of know where you stand because we honestly don't mind, we'll rewrite the ordinance as many times as you want, but we'd like to do it once rather than several times. So.
That was our intention, but obviously to save money, but some of these things have been on our table for like a year.
And I, and I understand that, Ryan. So it's going to be up to council as how you do it. But again, we're just trying to be conservative with your dollar.
What I'm hearing is concern for both. In the first one, there's concern about the, the grading and the stormwater because you're winning, we'd like to hear back from the county.
I mean, I think we need more data on the, on the parcels and how they're, how they're stratified.
All right, so that, that would hold up the first ordinance. And on the second one, what I'm hearing is there's concern now about giving this blanket relief to parking in downtown.
Residential.
Yes.
I think it was partially understanding that it wouldn't be likely that there'd be like a 20-unit residential place because, because, you know, the buildings themselves as they stand.
What's your threshold? Eight-unit, 10-unit?
So was it envisioned to only apply to existing buildings then?
For my understanding, I guess for, for the time being, it's, it would be like, it would be unlikely that there'd be, anybody would demolish or build anything new immediately, I guess. It's, we've kind of based it on Phoenixville's theory where they got rid of majority of their downtown parking to, because so everybody's going to, you know, zoning hearing board every time they want to do anything.
Is that discussion finished or?
I mean, if it's, if it's only applying to existing buildings.
I mean, it's, those meetings have been lengthy and it's been probably a couple of months since we talked about that specifically. Like, I could take it back to committee if you'd like and maybe just, you know, discuss your, your concerns, but.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, my concerns is, yeah, it's unlikely we get a new development coming.
Because majority of the buildings that we have in their, their current layout, I don't think you'd get, you know, like a 15-unit. There's, there's certain requirements of, you know, the size of the, of the units and, you know, the facilities that are able to go in them. But if you think it's a concern, sure, we'll get it again.
I mean, I just think that it should be looked at for new, for new buildings. Because you could get someone that, that came in and, and, you know, acquired half a block and wants to put a five-story apartment building. And then what would we do with the parking at that point? We would want some provisions made for parking, I think.
So it sounds like it should go back to committee.
That's fine. That's cool. We'll be meeting this month, I believe, and we could get an, of course, the swimming pool this time of year is not going to be a big issue. We could definitely.
We've waited this long. Let's make sure we do it right.
I'm not sure if this falls under the discussion, but are we talking about ordinances in general, right? Or just whatever? Because in light of some of the discussion that residents have been bringing before council for the past three or four months, has there been any consideration to revisit the open pit ordinance at all? Or is that, no? With, you know, burn, for?
We really haven't had any other complaints other than those couple individuals.
Yeah, but it seems like a, you know, consistent situation, right?
The issue with them is not our burn ordinance. It's just a bad neighbor issue with those individuals that have spoken that you're referring to.
Yeah, exactly.
Their neighbors, we saw the, the video of it. They're, you know, clearly not in compliance with their burning ordinance anyway. So I'm not, I guess, I've been, staff did their best to try to quell that, I suppose, or police department, the fire department, whoever deals with it. That's why I was kind of surprised to see them again.
Okay. So you're saying according to what we've seen, they're not compliant? Is that what you, is that what you said?
Well, the, that video that they showed us, I mean, they were like five feet away from the fence, burning tires or whatever they were doing. You know, it's.
So have you been out there dealing, dealing with the situation?
I have not, but our fire chief has.
Okay, yeah, that's what I meant.
Our department has.
Right. Okay. All right.
Good.
Okay, so it's basically one, that one situation that seems to be the, the problem? That one?
There's one or two that, yeah, that are consistently bringing it up. Other than that, I really don't receive that many complaints about it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So concerning the two ordinances, I'd like to send them back.
Okay.
Okay. Agreed? Very good. Thirteen, ordinance refinancing 2007 and 2012 water bond series. Ms. Lee, some good news for us.
Okay. I handed out before the meeting. You should each have at your places a packet like this. So the page, we've done this before a couple of times through the years. Turn to page two, gives a brief overview of what the current debt is for the bonds for the borough and the authority. And this is refinancing the water 2012 and 2007 bonds. Because the borough guarantees the debt, we need an ordinance passed and the council's approval for us to move forward. Page three shows you the timeline and we definitely would like to have the auction for the bids before the presidential election because I think that could put a little skew on things. So we need to get things in place by October. Page four shows you the existing information on the 2007 bonds. Page five shows you the 2012. And page six is the main page to look at as far as the refinancing. It shows that the savings approximately 255,000 would be in year 2020.
Just to clarify, that savings would, would only be for the water fund for the '06 water fund only. It would not impact any other funds?
Strictly the water fund where the bonds are, water bonds are paid out of. So looking for ordinance approval on Monday night. Any questions?
So these types of transactions always happen very quickly because of the market rates and when you can effectuate a savings. So literally, I think, I became aware of a discussion probably 10 days ago and bond council is in the process of preparing and advertising the appropriate ordinance to present to you Monday night. So there's not a lot of time here, but basically what you're doing is you'd be approving an ordinance that would allow the refinance of the debt, which would ultimately save that water fund, the monies that we're talking about. So it's a, it moves quickly, but you're, you're the first step in approving the ordinance to allow the borrowing to occur. The authority is principally obligated through the revenues they receive from water and sewer fees, but you guarantee the payment. There's never, ever been a default by the authority on anything. And by your guaranteeing the payment, you get better interest rates and therefore more savings. So I spoke with bond council today and they are in the process of preparing an ordinance to be advertised for you to have Monday. And as soon as the draft is ready, it's a rather thick ordinance, but it'll be in, in your packet if you care to read it. And I'm saying that kind of sarcastically because it's, it's extremely, extremely difficult reading and basically it, it says what I just said about what you're doing. So.
So unless there's someone that doesn't want to save the 255,000, we'll list this for action Monday.
Thank you.
Resolution 2020 MMO, the non-uniform pension plan.
Yeah, so the MMO is the municipality's minimum obligation, minimum municipal obligation towards our, both our police and our non-uniform pension plans. So each year, there is an obligation that has to be set forth by the municipality to make up for any differences and, or any, or any shortfalls in investments or any change to the, the actuarial tables that are prepared for these plans. So for both of these, for both of these plans, what we've, what we've seen, again, when we've seen this last year, but we've seen another change in the mortality tables, to be updated, to be more consistent with public, public employees. So there's now a table out for, for public employees. That impacts it a little bit. The thing that really impacted us this year with the, the obligations increasing had to do with the snapshot date in which they looked at our portfolio. So in order to determine whether we're, whether we have enough in the account or whether we need to put more money in to get us up to where we should be, they use a snapshot date. That snapshot date, I believe, was January 1st, 2019, when the market was at its all-time low for the year. So although we've done well in our investments this year, because they're using that snapshot date, we have to put in more of a, a, more funds into that to make sure that it, it's sustainable. Are you given notice of what the snapshot dates want to be or is it like?
It's actually a two-year period, 17 and 18.
17 and 18. Yeah. So, but when they took, when the, when they took the last snapshot, it was at the low point of the market. So that's one of the factors that, that is kind of playing into this.
And that was January this year?
That was January of this year, correct?
It was to December 31st in 18.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Oh, gotcha.
So basically the market went way down in, in mid to late December. They, they took the snapshot on the 31st and then after that, the market started to come back up. So.
So the snapshot is something that happens? We don't know when it's, when it's going to happen? The snapshot itself?
No, it's every two years.
Yeah, it's every, it's every two years.
On the same day? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So unfortunately, we did get hit with that. So for the police pension plan, the minimum municipal obligation increased 263,055 to 1.784,671,000. And the. And the non-uniform increased 415,280,000 for a grand total of 1,320,150,000. So all, all in all, we're looking at an increase of over, you know, half a million dollars in, in, in total. So we're looking for council's authorization to make that contribution.
And we'll list that for Monday. Okay, sixteen, zoning variance for 444 North Mount Vernon Street.
Yeah, we received a copy of an application filed by an applicant for property at 444 North Mount Vernon Street. The request is to allow a five-person group home for a licensed community housed for five disabled adult individuals and support staff. The zoning hearing board has scheduled a hearing for September the 18th, 2019. As council's aware, council can but is not required to participate in zoning hearings. Council can do nothing. Council can support. Council can oppose. In this case, my recommendation would be to allow the zoning hearing board to hear the merits of the case and make their determination. And if you want to list it, we can discuss it more Monday.
So we'll list that for Monday. No, you can sign up for public comment at the end. Seventeen is for Comfort Inn at 99 Robinson Street. Seventeen is for Comfort Inn at 99 Robinson Street. Yeah, it's been through planning.
Yeah, this is a minor land development, this is the Comfort Inn project. They are revamping the existing motel, providing a porta cochere, which is a fancy name in my view for an overhang to allow the folks to drive through and not get red in rainstorms. As a result of the, as a result of those building additions, it does qualify as a land development. They're also restriping the parking and doing some improvements, basically renovating the hotel to bring it up to current standards. The planning commission reviewed the land development, recommended approval, subject to compliance with the engineer's letter. There were a few minor waivers, none of, none of real significance, and it's ready for your consideration Monday evening. The applicant's here tonight if you have any questions about the project, what it sort of looks like an improvement to the current facility. And Dan, you were at the meeting, so.
We approved, so, any questions? And your documents are listed in your packet. Okay, if not, we'll list that for Monday evening. Eighteen, Harbor Freight, 121 Shoemaker Road.
Yeah, this is, this is another minor land development. If you recall, this actually went to the zoning hearing board for a building addition to get some setback relief in the rear part of the building. This is up around Ollie's in that west-end shopping center. This is the actual land development to allow the building addition for a business known as Harbor Freight. Again, a minor land development by nature, reviewed by the planning commission, the applicant agreed to comply with the comments of the borough engineer and county planning commission. Planning commission recommended approval, and there were a few, again, minor waivers that were relatively insignificant for the project. And I think I saw the applicant here this evening, if there's any questions, if there's any questions for council, but otherwise, recommend to be listed for preliminary final approval and the granting of the waivers unless there are questions or concerns.
Any concerns? Not, we'll list that for Monday. Nineteen, land bank slash right-to-know officer. They need one.
Yeah, so the land bank is required to have a right-to-know officer, and essentially until they really become totally independent from the borough, we would ask that council appoint Ginny Takich to assist in that manner, as, you know, the borough's already storing the files and keeping everything for the land bank within our systems, so.
Okay. All right. Hearing no comment, we'll list that for Monday. Appointment of a deputy fire marshal.
I'd like to seek council's approval to appoint Rich Lengel as our deputy fire marshal. He would serve as a volunteer in this, in this capacity, and what it would allow is for coverage if our appointed fire marshal, Mr. Hand, is not able to make it. He also possesses a mechanical building inspection license, so he would be able to step in, in some cases for Al and I as well, if they weren't able to make it. Again, this is a volunteer position, there would be no pay associated with it. He would be considered a public official and covered under our public officials' liability insurance.
Fine. If there are no comment, we'll list that for Monday. Twenty-two, Red Horse Car Show, October 5th. So, they're extending the season.
Pottstown Municipal Airport.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Pottstown Municipal Airport, the charity event. Thank you.
Yeah, so I don't have a whole lot of details on this event. They want to hold a charity event for a child that is ill, either on September 27th or 28th, and we should have more details for you on Monday night.
Monday. All right, we'll hear that Monday. Now, the Red Horse Car Show, they're extending the season to October 5th.
Yes, they would like to extend for another month, they would also request the closure Evans and Charlotte on High Street. In addition, made to the original request, the 100 block of High Street as well. So, I'm not clear, is that the entire 100 block, or is that York to Hanover? Does anybody know? Okay, all right. So, we might want to get that.
We'll get that cleared.
Yeah, we might want to get that cleared up in the application.
Okay.
Let me see if there's a map. Okay, they are showing it to York on the map, on the cover page, it just says the 100 block. Okay.
Okay. We'll list that Monday. Twenty-three is the Red Horse Car Show slash Beer Garden, Smith Family Plaza. Have that request.
Yes, they'd also, in conjunction with that event, would like to have a beer garden in Smith Family Plaza. So, they would need council approval to serve alcohol in the park.
All right, we'll list that one. Twenty-four, Human Relations Commission appointment, the name is Howard Charles. Anything more?
Nope, they have a vacancy, and they would like Mr. Charles appointed as their next commissioner.
Very good.
Okay.
We'll list that one for Monday. Twenty-five, ad hoc committees discussion. I think I raised this last month, we've been getting recommendations from the ad hoc zoning commission on issues that are not zoning. So, I think it's under my authority that I can create committees and change them, and what I want to do is remove the name zoning committee and make it just an ad hocs ordinance review committee. And, Ryan, that would free you to look at any ordinance that presents a concern.
Catch-all committee, I guess? Sure, that's fine.
Okay with you?
Yeah.
Very good. So be it.
When does it usually, it's the third Wednesday around 5:30. You should join us, it's fascinating.
Okay, that was twenty-five. Now, we have two add-ons. Go ahead, Mr. Kell.
Correct, so we have, the first add-on tonight is the request from Pottstown United Brewing Company to hold an Oktoberfest in Smith Family Plaza on October 12th. It would, they would allow, they would have a beer garden in operation from 1 to 5 o'clock, and the consumption area would be limited to Smith Family Plaza. They would have monitors placed around the perimeter to ensure that alcoholic beverages do not travel beyond the confines of the designated area, and they will be providing RAM certified servers and observe all due diligence, ensuring proper ID before alcoholic beverages are served.
Okay. No questions, we'll list that for Monday. And the second request?
The second request is for Light Up the Night. It's a rally for a week without violence, and they're requesting to close the 300 block of King Street from Charlotte to Evans between the hours of 5:00 PM and 9:00 PM on October 17th.
No questions, so we'll list that for Monday evening. Okay, we're at the time for comments from citizens present. Sir, if you have interest in making a comment, would you sign in, please?
R. Linderman, please. That's you? Okay, great.
Oh, you did, okay.
My name is Richard Linderman, I'm an attorney here in Pottstown, and I represent eight families in regards to the zoning variance that was not a Doris fan, is asking, we're of the 7th ward. She wants to put in a group home for mentally disadvantaged adults, and I really believe, Chuck, that I'd like the council to charge you with the responsibility to support the decision made by your zoning officer where a group home is not permitted in a neighborhood residential zone. And they're attacking the legality of your stature, of your ordinance, and rather than just let it up to the zoning hearing board, I think the council should allow Mr. Garner to support decision made by the zoning officer. And that's all I have to say.
No further citizen comments.
Counselors, general discussion. How about Counselor Ryan?
Well, I'm sorry to see Pastor Brooks go, he's a good guy, got to serve with him on a, you know, neighborhood partnerships committee for several years, and, you know, he'll be missed. I'm sure.
Nothing.
Counselor Leavitt?
Nothing.
Counselor Kirkland?
Counselor Paez, any comment?
Latin festival, September 21st, 5/26. Welcome, everybody.
Tell them to come hungry.
Yes, there's going to be a different food for different, I think, seven countries so far.
Okay, Counselor Lindsay? Nothing?
Yes, I do, just a little bit. I didn't do too much the month of August because I had five cousins who had baby showers in DC, so I had to go home. But I did attend, the high school this week had, and it's like a little press conference thing, they got a new alignment, it's pretty and red, they had a Tesla out there, and it was nice and shiny, so it was nice. Joe was there, our state rep, and he gave a wonderful speech, and the kids were there, and it's nice. So, this is, this is one of the state-of-the-art alignments, and not even the dealerships have these. So, our kids are going to go out there, and they're going to be like smarter than the rest of these. They're going to show other auto shops how to work on this state-of-the-art alignment. It was really nice, it was a nice event. But that's all I have.
Hey, I missed Trinita tremendously this month, but don't ever say that you didn't do too much because you're in Pottstown every day, and people see you every day, constantly doing stuff.
Thank you, thank you.
That's it? I think I gave enough for my report.
Yes, she did, good job, good job.
Nothing to do in town.
I was impressed.
Nothing, absolutely nothing.
Okay, I have nothing to add. I do have to announce we will have an executive session, we'll be discussing real estate, and no action will be taken.
And collective bargaining.
And collective bargaining, sorry. May be adjourned.